This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, well, he's here, we can see him, so I'm going to say Cindy Kuzinski here. Maren, you there? Do we have voice now?
I think I've got voice now, yeah.
You do, you do, you do. Okay, great. And Cindy Kuzinski here. Okay, there is no public speak, this is a work session. So we're going to go right into our agenda, our first order of business. There is an internal candidate. I know that at the time that we made our decision for four, we were expecting an internal candidate. We did get one. So we have Sarah Mochek. And all we have to do is say yay or nay to having Sarah also apply for this position. She has sent us the resume and references, so we just need to say yes and then fit her in to our interview schedule if it's yes. So is there any thoughts, any discussion? Mayor?
I would like to see Sarah be considered as a candidate out of respect of her knowledge of the district as well as her experience.
Any other discussion?
I was just curious what will happen to her current position? Will someone fill it?
You would advertise for it and fill it.
Got it.
That's all. So do we want to make a motion to accept Sarah Mochek as a candidate? And then move her into the interviewing schedule?
I would like to make a motion to include Sarah Mochek as a candidate.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. That was easy, I thought it would be. I do want to make you aware of something. I received an email from Tony Sario. He is a retiring superintendent. And he said he's been following what's been going on, but he couldn't find anything on the MASC website. He did not send a resume, but he left a voicemail and an email saying that he was a retiring superintendent and he would like to, he would like to apply. So a couple of hesitations. He, I don't have a resume. And I also, it came in beyond our acceptance date, even beyond our internal candidate date. So I was wondering what anybody thinks about that?
I would agree. I think our process needs to be closed.
Okay, I think so too. I mean, that's my feeling. All right, Mayor, what are your thoughts?
I think the process, I mean, you know, thank you, Dr. Sario, for submitting interest, but the process for interim is closed at this point would be, would be my preference.
Yep. Ben, you agree?
Same thing, yeah. Grateful that he threw his hat in there. But I think we're ready to start moving.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, and Megan, are you taking notes? I am taking notes, but we can put them together because Sue is not here. So it was, I believe, Megan who made the motion to accept Sarah, and Maren seconded. So I want to make sure I have that down. Okay, all right. So now we just go on to looking at our interim questions. Now, everybody received them, right? Okay. Did you make some choices? So we will have two other school committee members. So there will be seven people asking questions. At least, that's my belief. So I was thinking two questions a person? I mean, that's basically what we did last time unless the sense is that we don't... There aren't that many extra questions. I'm looking at... Well, does anybody have any favorites? Let's ask those first. The ones you absolutely want to have on the list.
I have a few from that. I'm wondering if we should think about... Oh, it looks like Maren has his hand up.
Cindy, I did send you an email.
Okay.
Are you... Cindy, I did email you. I don't know if you can check your email just because I'm not able to have it in front of me at this moment. We did have three questions last time. I'm open to the idea of reducing it to two questions this time. In review of my questions, I had the three questions I had. I did think two of them were not directly as pertinent to a interim superintendent. And so, but did put forward the one that I, at least, the two that I thought were more pertinent to interim. So I could clearly be willing to take like the first one. And the one question that I still was keeping, if you could see those for me.
Okay, I'm just going to refresh my email and see if it's there.
Cindy, I wonder if it would be helpful if I, we open up a Word document and kind of keep a running list going?
Sure.
I can start a blank document and share my screen and we can be working on that one. I also have, I pulled the ones from the two emails that were sent to us with interim specific questions.
Those are the ones I think we should put up.
Okay, so I will share that, those in a document. I might have taken one or two of them out, so if you see something that you want to add back in, just...
Sure.
Share screen.
So I liked all of the questions that Liz sent us.
Is it called present now?
I'm not able to do it. I don't think I'm going to be allowed to do it because, yeah. Because I have so many administrat... I just use my work laptop for everything and I'm not allowed to be administrator for my work laptop. So I'm not allowed to change the settings on my computer. So would anyone else on the committee like to share a Word document and be our note taker?
Well, I can read, I can be the note taker and I can read each question. So until somebody figures that out, we could just...
Keep track of them over in a Word document?
Or I'll just write down which ones we really like.
Okay, we're here too.
Just so you know, Maren, I don't have that yet. It hasn't come through. Okay, the first question is, how would you begin your work as an interim superintendent? Who would you seek out and what information would you want or need? Wish we could have them up. The second question is, how would you work with school committee to set goals for your interim superintendency? I think that's a really good one. What added value to the receiving district would you provide to our district during your service as an interim superintendent? What has been your experience working for a specific time to achieve specific goals that might predict your effectiveness as our superintendent, interim superintendent? What has been your history, this one I like, working with principals and other building leaders who oversee teaching and learning? How important is it for an interim superintendent to be visible in the schools or in the community? How would this be different from a superintendent on a long-term contract? What would your exit plan be? And what information would you be able to impart to your permanent successor? Special education is important to a large segment of our district. What is your experience with special education? What is your experience working with a school committee? That one, so number two, well, let me read through all of them before I comment. And other people might have comments. Okay. How do you see yourself guiding the district financially in light of the end of federal stimulus funding? How do you see yourself addressing questions of diversity, equity, and inclusion given the short term for your interim superintendency? What are some of the special considerations for an entry plan for an interim superintendent?
I like that one.
What do you...
No way in question by question, but that one's...
No, no, I think we should weigh in question by question if you want. What do you see as the special mission of an interim superintendent? And what can you do as an interim leader to prepare for smooth transition and success for the next leader? I like that one too. How do you maintain morale during an interim situation or a transition? And how do you see your role in working with the community during your interim superintendency? I had a couple that I thought were not quite as important. I was looking at, there's two about working with a school committee. So if you already have been the superintendent, I think one question about how you work, how do you see yourself working with the school committee? I don't need to hear about their experience because they've already been working with a school committee wherever they've been, whether they've been in interim or a superintendent. So that question nine just seems like it's an extra that we really don't need. But we've covered it with question two. How would you work with the school committee to set your goals for the interim superintendency, Megan?
So in case it's helpful, I just sent to our emails, I put them all in one list. Am I muted?
No.
Oh, okay. My computer, it sounds like you said, oh, it sounds like it's... I just sent all of, I put those all in one document with the same numbering so that we're all referring to the same number because there were two separate documents. Plus, we had some suggestions from community members.
Yep.
And so it totals 14 when you take out the duplicates, as you just said. So that should be in your inboxes as soon as the...
You are so quick. I've got it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can, if we use that one, we can refer to the numbers.
Great. All right, so we can see them all. And I really think, what do you see as the special mission and goals of the interim superintendent? And what can you do as interim leader to prepare for smooth transition and success for the next leader? I think that's a really important one. Yes, no, yes.
I'm happy to keep that one.
Okay. And I'm happy to ask that one if you want, just to start it off if that's the order that we do.
It looks like Maren, Maren has your hand up.
Maren?
Yeah, I did resend it to, after it had sent to your Juneau for some reason, email address. Anyway, so I resend those to you, Cindy. The one that I had was sort of, and I added a phrase to it, but you know, given our current superintendent process, you know, and then the question I think that's already there is, how do you see yourself engaging in the school and community? That's the one that most resonated to me and felt like a really important question that I'd like to ask. I don't know which number it is now at this point. I think it was number one of one of the pages originally.
Are you talking about our original set of questions?
Yeah, the questions that were originally sent out to us.
Oh, okay, yes, I see it. How do you describe how you see your role in working with the community and district during an interim superintendency?
Yeah, there's two of them. There's another one that's before that, I think, too. You guys can, why don't, since it's a little bit more difficult for me, I'll just, you guys go through your process and I'll just listen and I'll add myself in later. That's okay.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So, yeah, so that was question number three. Question two is, how would you maintain morale during an interim situation or transition? I really like that question.
I'm interested in that question too. I'd love a sort of balance between sort of morale and engaging with the community. I'd like to balance that with some, you know, ongoing questions. Like, I'm interested in the special education question and/or the DEI question. Just to, I would love to hear these candidates talk about their thoughts on those issues. I don't know if we need both or not, but we could decide.
So here's what I'm going to propose. If we choose 14 questions, we don't have to choose all of them. I think one of them definitely is a repeat. We can leave four questions up for the new school committee members. And if something happened and they didn't swear in in time for the interviews, which I can't foresee happening, then one of us would just take those questions. But this way, we've left four so that people have something to ask. Does that make sense? All right. So, all right, I'm looking at your list. How would you maintain morale? I think that's really important. All right. Maren likes number three, which is describe how you see your role in working with the community and district during an interim superintendency. Number four, how would you begin your work? Who would you seek out and what information would you want or need? That is very similar to what we asked before. Yep. I think that's a great question. Mayor, you would like that one?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody want question number two? So Cindy takes number one. Question number two is up, three is Maren, four is the mayor.
You can assign me any of them, however it makes sense, I don't mind.
Okay, well, we can pick and choose as we go along. I don't think, you know... All right, so five is, how would you work with school committee to set goals for your interim superintendency?
I think that's important. I think it's a good, like, given number four, like walking in the door and gathering that information and then working with us to set... I mean, there's a little overlap, but then how do you sit down with the school committee and say, these are, you know, my top three goals? Or this is my, you know, professional development, not professional. This is my operational plan, however, you know, they decide to do it.
Does anybody want that question? Megan, you want that question?
You can fill me in around anyone who, yeah, I don't mind which question I ask.
Well, we can always switch. All right, question number six, I think, is really important. How important is it for an interim superintendent to be visible in the schools or in the community? And how would this be different from a superintendent on a longer-term contract? I think that's a great question.
Yes, I think that's a really great question.
Okay, does anybody want that?
I'm happy to take...
Sure. It says, how important is it for an interim superintendent to be visible in the schools or in the community? How would this be different from a superintendent on a longer-term contract?
Yeah, that was the question that I had sent you, that I rephrased quite slightly in my email.
Okay. All right.
Are we asking questions that were from our previous superintendent?
Except, except what Liz sent us is things that were specifically designed for an interim superintendency. We certainly can add a question from anything that we did originally. I don't see a problem at all adding a question in here and there that we liked from our original interviews.
Okay, I had sent one about leadership style that I still thought was pertinent.
Okay. So I'll be able to queue that up in a minute. Right now, I'm looking at that. So I'm looking at leadership style will be Maren later on. Okay. Describe your vision of a successful exit plan for interim superintendent and what you hope to accomplish and pass on to the selected superintendent.
I like that. Just, you know, forward thinking what's there, how cognizant that is as they're, you know, being considered for the role.
Yep. The next one I really like, what's your approach for engaging in discussion with people who disagree? All right, we're going to look at a few more and then I will scroll to Maren's questions and we can look back at whatever else we had. Give an example from your life, what you did or said something that you later regretted. How did you recognize it was a misstep? What did you learn from that experience? And how did you make amends?
I mean, yeah, like, that's, that's a good one. I mean, that's, that directly attempts to, you know, deal with the elephant in the room, so to speak.
Right.
The only tweet to that question that I might suggest is, you know, sometimes, and this gets even more to what you're saying, Ben, about our situation. It's not necessarily when somebody, it's when you recognize you've made a misstep. But what, what do you do when someone points out that you've made a misstep? And I don't know if we have to make it that specific or not, or we put both options in. But it's not just that you realize it, but somebody actually has pointed out to you.
How do we write that? Let's see. Give an example from your life when you did or said something that you later regretted or someone pointed out was a misstep? What did you learn from that experience and how did you make amends? Do we want to change that a little bit more?
I wrote down from what you just said. Give an example from your life when you did or said something you later regretted. How did you learn it was a misstep? Did someone else point out it was a misstep? What did you learn from the experience and how did you make amends? Did I get that right?
That's not how I said it, but that sounds good.
It sounds really clear. It seems very clear. Megan's just phrasing of the question.
Yeah, I like it.
Could you say it one time, Megan?
Yep. Give an example from your life when you did or said something you later regretted. How did you recognize it was a misstep? Did someone else point out it was a misstep? What did you learn from that experience and how did you make amends?
Did someone point it out is a little awkward maybe, but I, just that clause, I think, needs a little tweak.
Rephrase it for us, you're the writer.
I want to see it.
I know, I, well, so I sent you a message that said, if you want to do, here's a Google Doc. If you want to share your screen, I just admin-wise can't.
Let me see if I can find that.
It's locked down.
Well, how about if you do, give an example from your life when you did or said something that you later regretted? How did you recognize it was a misstep? Or did someone point that out to you? What did you learn from that experience and how did you make amends?
Bring it to your attention, something like that.
Yeah.
Or did someone else bring it to your attention?
Sure.
Or did someone bring it to your attention?
Well, because you're asking if someone realized it was a mistake or did somebody else point it out to them? Because if you realize it's a mistake, it's often easier to accept that you made a mistake than if somebody else pointed it out to you.
If you want to say, did you recognize it was a misstep? And/or, because I guess it could be both things.
Yeah. Let's skip the end door.
Do you want me to share this? I can, I think I can do this.
Sure.
I think I can, actually. I'm going to try to share my whole screen. What is it, what's the difference between a window and a screen?
I think you want to share a window.
Okay.
I think the screen would be like your whole screen.
That's helpful.
We're not in a brush, that's the only thing really that we have to do today.
Okay, I'm literally clicking allow, nothing is happening.
Who meets hard? We're not used to this system.
This doesn't make any sense. Oh, I might have a permissions block on this, which is, I don't understand, because we use Google at my school, so I don't know why this is not working. All right. Might have to change gears here.
Well... So if you can't see it, I think...
I can't share it, apparently.
What if I shared this with the whole group? And then we'll, for anyone who is watching us, these questions will get posted so that you'll have a visual of all of this, correct, Chair?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, no, go ahead then.
It just told me I can't share.
Well, they're not going to get posted right now. They're not going to get posted right now.
No, it will be in the minutes, right? How will folks be able to find out? Because normally we would share our screen and it's being recorded so they would be able to see all the questions as we're workshopping them.
They're going to be the questions we ask in the interviews.
Right.
We're going to be approving these minutes now. We're going to be approving our questions tonight before we end. And then they'll be the questions we ask. There's no more time for, you know, changing or adapting.
Right.
So I don't think there's a need. We've had feedback from customers, the community members, so...
Right, if that was your question and you're thinking, Maren is correct. We're not, we're not going to redo these. We're doing them tonight. We're agreeing on how many questions, what they are. And so what we did last time is we did not send the questions out ahead of time, but they were printed for each candidate and for us. So then they're public. Not a secret now.
Technically now, and technically now the candidates already know what the questions are going to be, so...
Correct. Okay. In case it's helpful for the committee members, I'm resending the email. This time it's a live document in Google Drive, so you can see updates as we are, as I am typing them in the notes.
Okay, so let me change...
The same document, but now it's in Google.
Right.
And I tried to make note in italics on the bottom of the ones that have been suggested that aren't on there right now.
So I just got an email from Steve Pataro saying they haven't been allowed in. Let me peek.
I haven't seen anyone who pops up on my screen I've been allowing in.
I'm looking at the list.
I don't see that individual in here.
Oh, that's interesting. They're not, they're not here.
Megan, I'm in the right document. I'm in there with you right now, right?
Yep, and so I also joined.
All right.
So it looks like it's working.
I think number nine, I think that issue I had sounds okay now. Did you recognize it was a misstep and/or did someone bring it to your attention?
Okay.
Gives a little space for a person to work with that.
Yeah. Okay. So we're good with the first nine now that we have a live document.
Okay, um. All right, so after the first question, put my name.
Okay.
After the third question, put Maren's. Put the mayor at the fourth question. Number five was Megan. Number six, I have Maren. Okay. No one picked seven or eight yet. Give an example from your life. Is this one? Who wants to ask that one? Give an example from your life when you did or said something that you regretted. Did you recognize it was a misstep? And/or did someone bring it to your attention? What did you learn from the experience? How did you make amends? Okay.
I can, I can do that one if you want.
Okay.
So Ben will do nine. All right. And then 10, being a public official may invite a lot of criticism and sometimes hostility from those who do not agree with decisions you've made and sometimes requires leading a district with a divided opinion. How do you manage that type of feedback and situation? Does everybody think about that question? Mayor?
Um, I, I think that that's a, a good question to ask. I also just have a comment about the, the live document that we're working off of. Is it possible, I certainly can do it through the city webpage, to take the questions that were, we selected, like, take this live document and then maybe bold the questions and who's gonna ask them so people can see the 14 questions considered and then the ones we're actually gonna ask. And we can put that on the city website and, I mean, on the city Facebook and do a news flash and put it on our, on our website. And then folks could see all 14 questions and the ones we choose in bold. Because we keep it up on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. That's for maximum transparency. I want everyone to have access to whatever they would like to have access to.
And, and Megan, once we're done with the document, if you just send it to Lindsay in my office.
Yeah, she can post it.
And she can post it. I'll, I'll give her, I'll send her a reminder right now. Or let her know what's coming.
Again, I want to point out, these are questions that we're asking of our candidates. I don't, I mean, I understand transparency and I understand our desire to, to share information with the community, but these are the interview questions that we're gonna be asking our candidates. We don't generally post those for the candidates to know in advance of the interview.
I would say it's already a.
Obviously, they can watch this.
It's a public document, Maren. We could get a FOIA request tomorrow, so let's get ahead of it.
Well, of course we could, but I, I mean, and they could watch.
No, I, I agree, I agree with Maren. But I also don't, don't see a problem with us doing this. It's a little different from when we did the superintendent interviews, but it's an interim candidacy, so it's different anyway. And we probably would get 10 or 15 requests for the questions, so we might as well take care of that now. I, I think, I think we're, we're right on both counts. But I think that it might just save some, some frustration.
Yeah, and interviews, after the first interview, it'll be moot point anyway.
Yeah. Well, probably tonight it's gonna be a moot point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I'm sure somebody's watching, which is good.
Yeah.
Okay. Describe, now let's see, being a public official, we did that one.
And who's gonna ask that one? My only feedback on that one is that it's a little bit on the nose. To be clear, we got these sent to us. So that question reads like a school committee that just got a lot of feedback and criticism asking it. So I just wondered if it would, we wanted to say something like, being a public official or a superintendent, you know, sometimes requires making decisive decisions or something along those lines. I'm not opposed to how it's worded. That's how it came to us, but I wanted to at least have that addressed in the public mean that we did not craft this as a reaction to criticism that we've received.
Good point. Thank you. I don't have a problem with it is written. And it is. Obviously, everybody who applied is aware of the, the decisions and the events going on. So I really don't have a problem with that. Does somebody want to change the wording or just leave it as is? I'm open to either. Thing. I just wanted to bring it up.
I kind of, I kind of want to leave it like maybe in limbo until we go through the rest of the questions. Just, I don't know, I, I.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a, it's a, it's a useful question, but I, I wonder if maybe other questions might also tap into that same, the same energy of that question.
Okay.
Uh, number 11, what specific skills and strengths do you feel you offer to this interim position? And what do you see as the main goals for the district over the next school year? I really like that question. Most of these candidates have been in interim, so they can talk about their experiences, what they bring, what they did.
It sounds fine to me. I have no objections.
I don't mind. Let's see. Number 11, I don't mind that being my question. Okay. What do diversity, equity, inclusion and inclusion mean to you and how do they relate to the school environment? Ben, you want that one?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, are we in agreement that that's relevant?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm now with it. Love to read that one. Sure.
This one, I didn't. I didn't see this one.
This one was emailed from a community member. I just put them all into one document.
Oh, okay.
This one was not from the state.
Okay. Um. So number 13. I don't think it's necessary in that if you are someone working in the school district, you should be addressing that. And that just, that is probably gonna be a pretty standard answer. But I think number 14. I really like is when have you personally advocated for diversity, equity and inclusion in a workplace? I think that one's very different.
Is it different from 12?
Um. I see them as different. So what does diversity, equity and inclusion mean to you? And how do they relate to the school environment? That is kind of, to me, a typical programming and inclusion question, whereas the other one, you're actually asking, do you have an example of advocating? I just see that different.
That should be a follow-up question. I mean, there, I mean, they should be definitely, I think, like, could be part one, part two.
Yep, we could. We could do that. Okay. 15 was important to Maren. How would you describe your leadership style? And what particular strengths do you believe you bring to East Hampton?
Sounds good to me.
That's number 15. All right. And then special education is important to a large segment, segment of the district. What is your experience with special ed?
That one, I just, um, make sure we got on there, Ben. I think that was one that you had mentioned, wanting to make sure we kept on there. And if I miss anything else, we can.
I do think we should. I think, I mean, I think that, I mean, it's, it, I want to hear what they have to say about that specific population and.
I agree.
Do you like that phrasing? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I agree and, as well on number 16, and I'm, I'm wondering, I'm, I'm going back and forth on it. But consider it's an interim position and the funding of special ed is usually a year or even two years behind. You know, is there a follow-up? What's your experience with special ed? How would you apply it as an interim superintendent? Because the.
I like that.
You know, and, and with programming, right? We, you know, an interim coming in and saying, oh, we're gonna do this special ed curriculum or whatnot, like, not that I'd be worried, I, just being there for a year and making those kind of changes would be concerning, I, I think. You know, to the community.
I, I like it. I like that addition. Megan wrote it in. Um, so now, Ben, we're we have you down for nine and 12. All right. We have my two with one and 11. We have two for Ma- Maren, number three and number six. Although, um, Maren really wanted to ask leadership, and that's question 15. So I'm wondering if Maren wants to not ask. Number three, let me go back to what three was. Describe how you see your role in the community. Or give an example when you did or said something you regret, regretted. Oh, no, that's Ben. Okay. Six, one is six. I was, uh, important to be visible in the community. So we really want to pick two.
I, I have nine and I have 12.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I thought you just said I was three.
No, Maren has three, six and 15 was one that I think was more important to him. I'm wondering if we just leave, uh, how important is it to be out in the community?
Do you want me to ask that? Oh, that's too narrow for me. So it doesn't, whatever works.
Yeah.
So we're blanking. So if we have, I think right now we, we have ended up with 14 questions.
Yep.
Which means that's two questions for everybody, including the two new folks.
Correct.
So we can leave two.
So we have to give the mayor one more question. Because I have two, I have one and 11. Maren has three and 15. The mayor has four. And Mayor, do you want to ask, um, the 16th question about special ed?
Sure, yes.
Here's your two.
Cindy, can you read what number three is? Because I don't think that was, I don't, not sure where you got that one from for me, so for that.
Yeah, so you might want to swap that out. So number three is describe how you see your role in working with the community and district during an interim ten, intend, uh, superintendency. And then your other one was how important is it for an interim superintendent to be visible in the school or community? And how would this be different from a superintendent on a long-term contract?
So what, the first one is interacting with school and community? The second one is about more about visibility?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I, yeah, I don't know if we need both of those anyway, but I would want to do more interacting with school and community.
So that would be number three for you. Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. And Megan said she would ask number six.
I would, or we can leave it blank because I'm also asking number five, just to move things around. Assign it to one of the new folks.
Okay.
But again, I'm.
But then you need one more question, Megan.
I do. So we have, I'm trying to go through and put them in. So we have no one for number two, no one for number six. Oh, and we wanted to come back and talk about number 10. I have it in italics to remind us.
Yeah. I certainly can switch if you want, um, that question asked and nobody wants to do it. I can switch out one.
I don't mind. So how many do we have with that one? So we have 14 questions with the one in italics in with number 10 in there.
Right.
Which is perfect. Do we want to keep, do you want to just keep that in there? Do we like the?
Oh, no, I think we should. I think it's appropriate.
Okay. We wanted to think about the wording of a little bit.
That's fine with me. I'm okay with how it's worded, but we could change that. It's up to, to everybody else. But that gives everybody two questions and it leaves four questions for the new members.
Okay. So I need to ask that one. And then we have open. Then we have four blanks. Yeah, that works.
All right. All right, so then, um, two, six, seven and eight are open. Okay. I think that works well.
And you're more likely to get into a small, a shorter interview time.
Yeah. And it doesn't necessarily mean a shorter interview time because depending on their answers. You know, some people give a one or two-minute answer and some people will have a number of stories or examples that they want to put in. But I think this looks good. Do we like this? I do want to make a motion to accept that. Let's hold on those.
Let's do it. Someone want to make the motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept these questions for the interim superintendent. Does that suffice? Does that work?
Yes. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there we go. Any more discussions? All right. Okay, so Megan.
Um, Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Merrill Ashapell?
Yes.
Maren Goldstein?
Yeah.
And Cindy Krasinski, yes. Okay, that was easy. All right. Um, so that completes this part of the work. And then if you look at the agenda, um, we need to, um, move into, um, executive session to, I'll read it, to approve into executive session pursuant to MGL 38 S 21 A 7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. And then in parentheses, it says review of executive session minutes. It really is a review and a vote to release. So that's that's where we're going. Okay? So we need to move into.
Cindy, can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Before we go there, sorry. Can I just? Can I just confirm again that we are doing in person interviews for these on Saturday, Sunday and Monday?
Yes. Yes.
And so far, the the it's the two Saturday slots and the two Monday slots were already chosen. Is that what I saw come through?
I believe so. I think there was, there's two on Sunday that were opened, so that leaves a Sunday. Sunday was the least popular. So.
Sarah knows when her interview will be.
Yeah. Unfortunately, and I mean, it's fine with me. And it's at a decent hour, so that's helpful. So. Um, okay, so we are going to have to have everybody else leave and move into executive session. And we're going to turn from there.
Do we need to roll call into or to go into it?
Yep. We don't have to watch and people leave too as we're going. Um, so yeah, you can roll call in. And then we'll wait till everybody's gone and we'll be all set. Megan?
Sounds good.
Ben?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Maren?
Yeah.
And Cindy? All right, we need everybody to leave and we thank you for participating by listening.